...liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's remain standing and think about our troops serving our country here and overseas. Thank you. We have seats. Okay, welcome to workshop meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 24th. The next regular scheduled meeting will be on October 7 at 7:00 p.m. Next workshop meeting will be October 29 at 7:00 p.m. And the following regulabilities board meeting is November 4th at 7:00 p.m. That's the day before Election Day, so I'd like to make a motion to see if we can move that date and if anybody else has a conflict and change the meeting date from...
The next day.
That's Election Day.
The 6th.
Okay, 6th. That's a Wednesday.
I'm fine in any case, but I'm curious what would be the problem of having a day before Election?
We usually don't have village board meetings the day before Election Day, well, maybe people have campaigns.
Politician stuff.
Right.
I'm just trying to understand the reason.
I would say, I would say the following Monday.
That's Veteran Day.
Oh, that's Veteran Day, okay. Okay, how's the 6th sound?
It's fine.
Fine? Okay, November 6th. Mr. Ellsworth, you need, you need to present quickly because you need to lead.
No, I don't need to do anything quickly, Mayor, but I would appreciate it. I don't want to rush through my client's presentation, but sooner I get off with that.
Okay, so you're on.
I am.
How's that?
Mr. Mayor, Board members, thank you. As informal as I can get, the client, Neil Mead Inc., had presented a petition to village board approximately two years ago seeking, under your code, a change to your zoning law specifically to allow residential apartments above commercial establishments in the GB1 or GB zone, the general business zone.
CB.
CB, excuse me. That petition per your code was referred to your planning board for review and report back to the village board. The process was somewhat lengthy and appreciated, particularly with respect to the research that your then planner did regarding our petition and whether it should be considered. And as you know, there were two reports. There was one with respect to our initial petition, and then there was a second, much more lengthy, report that I believe you all have and I have, both of which acknowledged the fact that the zone was changed some time ago, in fact, before Mr. Lang was even retained by this village for a reason he was unaware of. But he also acknowledged in his, in his report that it appears based upon the changing tone and dynamic of downtown areas that the petition had merit, certainly wasn't telling us board what to do. So he had referred back to the planning board, and the planning board, based upon that, and a much shorter report back to you, recommended that it be considered. It has been some time, I know, there had, we haven't had a lot of discourse over the past year and a half with respect to that, and that's reasons that my client had not to push the issue. But at this point, his concerns are, as are many concerns of the local business, and who I'm not speaking for, that they have empty spaces above their, above their commercial establishments, and they have a heavy burden with respect to the overhead maintenance of those properties. Something that Mr. Lang pointed out in his report. The question presented to the board and the request to this board was not to change the zone to make it permanent use, but to change the code to allow for special permits for residential units above those particular commercial ones. The makeup of the village, as anyone knows who lives here, is a checkerboard pattern, so to speak, of residents above and commercial or entities above. There's no, there's really no particular rhyme or reason other than the fact that the residences above are those pre-existing non-deforming that are still there from way back when the code was changed. So those property owners who were, I guess, at the foresight to realize that residences were the thing of future, kept them there. And the property owners who had the insurance agent and the lawyer and the accountant and whoever else back in the day would have those offices above the stores where their clients could walk up, and quite frankly, in my practice, three quarters of my clients can't walk up three stairs, let alone a dozen. So those business owners who were renting had to leave. Their clientele couldn't, couldn't even get to the second floor. So now you're faced with business owners who have empty space and are still paying taxes on the full space, and, and obviously that's a concern of the business owners, but I think it should be a concern of the village. Because if you lose those people, they're going to be not only empty above, it's going to be empty below. And in order to bring in enough revenue for those business owners to pay their taxes and to make a living, make a profit, the second stories of these commercial, commercial establishments should be considered for the special permit. We could talk all nightmare, but I think you know the gist of the, of our purpose here, and I think our argument is fairly sound when it comes to the need for this special use permit. By asking the village, under your code, to at very least put it to a vote at a regular meeting, schedule a public hearing. Your code would require that. And then after the public hearing, at least you might find the opportunity, even if it's turned down, to take the next step. We are kind of stagnant here, and I think you understand that if the village board fails to act, my, my client's rights are somewhat limited. If it acts and is contrary to what my client wants, my client's rights are a little more constrained. So I appreciate the board's consideration.
Okay, so if we have that information, the board will consider the presentation and bring it before a vote at a special, at the next village board meeting, if you're prepared. We'll discuss it further. We can contact the zoning and planning attorney with any further questions.
And what, what meeting would that be?
I would say this meeting coming up. That will be...
I never attend your meetings, Mayor, so I never know when that is.
It's on the...
October 7.
October 7. Thank you.
Monday, it's a Monday.
Yeah. I mean, I...
We have enough time, man.
You've got to be sure if you won't go to do it. I think Mr. Ellsworth kind of just indicated he'd like you to vote it down. He'd like you to vote for it, but if you vote it down, then he can...
Just as an agenda.
Counsel it.
Just as an agenda, right, and we could bring it, you know, we can, we can bring the petition before the village board and vote on it?
Well, I thought we could do that.
Yeah, I, maybe we could talk about it.
All right, we'll talk about it tomorrow.
So we'll work on that?
Yeah.
I'm not expecting a vote. I certainly would like it, but I expect a vote, just would like it to proceed forward and not stay, stay in the same place.
Okay, on the agenda for Monday, we'll discuss further. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, board.
Just a couple things tonight. We have Brian Dorsey, he's going to be an over 18 member for the host company.
Do you have a motion to, so we want to add Brian Dorsey onto the insurance?
Yeah.
For over 18 for the host company, do you have a motion?
Motion.
In a second. Well, we can do this on Monday.
We can do this on Monday.
We'll do it on Monday, I'm sorry. It's been a long day.
It's okay. Do we usually agree with Allen Dale?
Yes. I just briefly mentioned to the chief that I have a, a draft ready for review with him. I'm going to be sending it to him tomorrow. There are some things that we need to discuss in terms of that draft document to, before we're ready to bring it forward, and so I'll start that conversation with him tomorrow about, about the draft that we have so far.
Okay.
And the new Trump, the new Trump committee, the specs should be back. It's going to be very close to having it for your, for the meeting on the 7th. It will be that or even shortly thereafter. I know you discussed, you said you wanted us to give you a presentation. When would you like that, or how would you like us to? You have a special meeting for that, or are we doing it at the next workshop? How would you like to...
Well, actually, you can give me the presentation or whoever's available to the board, and then we can present it after that, and, you know, and work it up in a workshop also. So the whole board has a, the concept of...
Okay, so when we get it, are we just going over with you first?
Yeah, you can all root me first, absolutely.
Okay.
And then, then we'll present it to the board at the next workshop.
Okay, that sounds good, because it should be, you know, maybe here for the meeting, but...
Right.
You know, it's going to be very close.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Great job on the brush fires the other day.
Yeah, the guys did a lot of work up there on the hill.
Right, how many hours were you there?
Well, they were here about four hours the first day and four hours the second day, you know. Took quite a bit to go up and down that mountain there to get it out. The problem now is, you know, this type of, this in the fall here, brush fires, they kind of burn, they almost, they get underground kind of, so they really don't go out, and they just... It's not that you didn't put out what you saw, it's that it's buried under the ground and then it works its way back out again in the fall. They do that until you get, until you start getting...
Do you think it might have started? Do you think it was...
I have no idea.
I was going to say, do you think someone, you know, started it?
I, I really don't know. I have no idea. There's no way to know, so...
I've seen mulch just combust.
Yeah.
In composition.
That's dump, right?
Yeah, and it just gets hot up there, you know, beats in the sun for the afternoon, and that's it.
How, how did you get up there? I wasn't...
Just climb it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's steep right there behind those houses. That's the only way to get there, so...
Sure, some pictures.
But they wound up getting it, so...
I didn't have to.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. Avon.
Yes, welcome. Good evening. Welcome again, I'm Seth Mandelbaum from McCullough Goldberg &amp; Stoudt, behalf of Avon, Michelle Dory, who all know, know and love, is here again for Avon. So we're here again this evening just to follow up on the discussion at your September 9th meeting. There was a question at that meeting about sort of precedent and have pilot agreements been amended elsewhere in the state, so I have a new associate who's not admitted yet. I can't really bill for his time for most things, but he's really good researching on Google. And I submitted to you a letter which went through a lot of different types of examples, and I frankly did, when that question was asked of me, I really didn't know myself. So I think we gave you a lot of good information. The most relevant example I thought was in 2016, and Rob Magrino might know about this if he was in Orange Town at that time, there was an amendment of a pilot which, under very similar facts, where there's about a 33 acre parcel and about nine acres were taken out of the pilot to be sold off after they were subdivided and all the taxing jurisdictions consented for Subaru next door to use for an expansion. So a very similar situation as this one. I also gave other examples around the state, both where companies unfortunately left the state and terminated their pilot. There are examples in Westchester, in upstate, and an example, again, right here in Rockman, where Olympus Camera Company came to, then you end 2003, signed the pilot, but then six years later moved back to Jersey and terminated the pilot. And then more recently, in April of 2019, Niagara County Verizon Media amended a pilot for an expansion project and also to transfer 1.6 acres of the original project real estate to a third-party company. So I think the concern was, has this happened elsewhere? It clearly has, and I hope that information is helpful. I also just wanted to let you know, I've been, we've been keeping Steve Barath and his attorney Brian Quinn up to date since, as I mentioned, in August, the Rockman IDA discussed this at their meeting and said they really have no objection, but of course, they want to hear from the village and the school district and the town. And I talked to Brian today about sort of logistics, because as you've heard from Michelle and myself, their, Avon senior leadership is under a lot of pressure on us. Maybe it's your problem, maybe it isn't, but it's our problem to try to sell this asset by the end of the year. And the calendar is starting to get very short, as we all know. So what Mr. Quinn told me is, once I can tell him that, and I hope we can sort of have a dialogue about this tonight, that each of the taxing entities conceptually is okay with this concept, I don't know if you are already, but I'm happy, I hope we can talk about it, he will circulate a draft amendment to the pilot agreement, and frankly, he kind of already has it from the Orange Town model, he's just had to update the details, to you, the school district, and the town for your review and for your consideration. So I was, hopefully you might consider, since you have a meeting coming up on October 7, I confirmed with Brian that if I tell him tomorrow that this board is conceptually okay, he can get that to your council and to the board in advance of your October 7 meeting, as well as the school district, which happens to also be meeting on October 7 because of going before, I think Ramaphone meets a little bit, the town board meets a little bit later in October. So that's pretty much our update. We're here really just to talk to you, see if you have any further questions, and see if you're in a position as a board to consider taking action on October 7. Much like the last applicant, although we're optimistic and hopeful that the action will be to consent to the amendment, if for some reason it isn't, we, we kind of need to know that sooner or later also, but again, we really hope that it's taking a look at the big picture here for all the reasons we've talked about, and I'm not going to go back through the writing, and we've talked about them for many months now. We're hopeful that it's a positive result.
All right, well, thank you for the update. I don't know if any of the other board members have any questions in regards to the Avon and amending of the pilot agreement.
The only thing that I can make is a comment since I was the one that raised the issue of prior amendments to pilots, and I read over your information. The one thing that I did notice was that all of those amendment agreements did include, like, a known entity, like, for example, with the Subaru. So the parceling out of that existing pilot agreement, there was a reason to do it, and at least then the board had some information of another company taking it over, using the property, and hopefully staying there with longevity. That's not the situation we have here. We can't market the property until we title to the property.
Right, that's sort of the...
But you, you do have a firm offer.
We have multiple parties that are interested.
Multiple.
And we can't do anything until we actually physically have title.
In other words, we don't have, we can't sign a contract...
Right.
Because we don't own the property, the IDA does. More recently, as I talked about at the last meeting...
Could you, could you, could you sell it without the amendment?
No, we don't own it. That's really the rub here. The more recent ones are straight lease transactions where it's a lease and a sublease back, but even in that case, you still need consent.
So you can't violate the amendment, the pilot? There's no way to violate it?
We're hoping to not break the agreement that we have with six different entities.
Right, okay. No, I'm just saying that...
Avon has no intention of violating that.
But I'm saying that there's a potential that you could.
You have absolutely no intention to do that.
Or you have no intention of doing it. Okay.
Right, and there, and frankly, there are huge penalties built into these agreements.
Right.
Monetary penalties that we hope don't come into play because we're asking the different entities to consent based on our offer to continue the payments, but as we remember, our original discussion was, can we extract from those payments a proportional share equal to about 16%? And the village and the school district both very firmly said, no, we wanted, we want those numbers to stay the same until this agreement is over. So we backed off on that and confirmed that those payments are those payments, and as you know, depending on what entity ultimately you buy, the taxes could certainly go, go up on the nail and parcel, once it's separately assessed, depending on where it ends up. But to answer your question, yes, in theory, we could violate the pilot, but we have no intention of doing so.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
You mentioned that there's several interested parties, so that implies that you've discussed with other, with multiple parties, you know, that the ones that are expressing interest, you know, this property. So you're able, so you're discussing the property, but not able to actually complete the sale. But do you have, you know, essentially any firm offers, so to speak, at this point, for what, if it were to be available, you know, like, are you, you reached that point, or is it just like, oh, yeah, we're interested, or we're interested, they're interested, you know, different parties?
We have multiple offers.
Offers, physical offers.
Okay.
That's interesting.
Yeah. I think Seth and I had actually discussed, and I believe you, how, if, and how you want to enter this, but if, maybe what the positives for the village would be in agreeing, and the negatives in not agreeing. I don't know, you know, how much money to get into that, or...
It's all positive, there's no negative.
All right, that's the end. That's a really...
That's a lot.
Well, there's, there's a couple of issues. Sort of the, the big picture issue is, we have this pilot agreement that goes, I double checked, it actually goes from May 31st, 2025, and we're in tax year 16. It's a little funky because, as you all know, the town, the school district, the county all have different tax years, but essentially, the hard expiration date is May 31st, 2025. And there's, the payments are set forth in the agreement, and they escalate every year till the end. It'll be almost $70,000 total, I think, I don't remember the exact number. So the positives are, you have certainty, everyone knows what the taxes are coming in, the school district was very firm about, they said, look, the reason we do pilots is we can budget for that number, we know we're not getting a tax cert on, on the property. In this case, the R and D, the main parcel, the nine or so acres that'll be left over, are still subject to the pilot, everyone knows what the taxes are going to be, you know what your share is, well, you always know what your share is. And Michelle's charge and her team is to monetize assets, that's what we're talking about. The Rife facility has been sold, this was identified, the nail and parcel was identified as, as another asset that the company liked to monetize. We did talk about the financial struggles the company has had over the last several years. So Avon is trying to raise as much cash as possible and maintain this R and D facility in, in the village's offer as long as possible. Certainly, the intent is to keep it there as long as, as long as they can. And we talked about this other company from Brazil that is interested in buying the company. It's in its early due diligence stages, we have no idea if that's going to go anywhere, when it's going to go anywhere, but, but those discussions are ongoing. But my understanding, Michelle, you could speak, is this sale certainly doesn't hurt the situation, right?
It actually increases the Avon's value for the potential purchaser. So the more money we have on the books, the more money that we can obtain from the purchaser of our organization. So that ultimately is what's driving this to close before the end of the year, because the, the sale of the company is supposed to close the first quarter of 2020. So this is really what's driving my senior management team to sell off this underutilized asset. So we are, they're very much pushing to move forward with this.
And the other positive, which is a potential positive, I'll word it that way, depending on who the ultimate purchaser is, you know, the pilot was done in 2003, and it kind of projected out taxes, but I, as I mentioned at the, at the last meeting, I just took a look at the current assessment, which I was able to find on the town Ramapho assessor website, and we have someone in my office who does tax certs, both for municipalities and private, and he kind of crunched the numbers, and it was clear that the, as we sit here today, the proportional taxes for this lot are significantly higher than what they would be under the pilot agreement. So there's a potential, again, depending on the status of the entity that ultimately buys the property, there, there's quite an upside potential for, from a tax perspective, again, depending if an entity, if an entity wants to use it for a current, a current warehouse type use or some other use that's permitted, that's an investment into a facility that's basically empty, creating jobs for the village, creating jobs for the county, these are all positive economic benefits, whereas right now, it's just sort of sitting there as a storage facility. And really, it's not being used very much by Avon. All the jobs are at the main R and D facility.
And that is not planning on changing? If anything, it would grow.
Under notorious, notorious Brazil?
That is the hope, yes.
That is the hope. Is there any indication that may be happening, like, to me?
I, I can't say one way or the other. The, the hope and the potential is there.
Right.
But we can't sit here today and tell you, defend it, because we don't know.
I'm no more in February now.
That is the first quarter of 2020. Okay. Anyone else?
No.
No, all right. Thank you. So we'll present, we'll talk some more. And to end, for...
Right. I think that the, I think that the board needs to have discussion with council, get some legal advice, have some legal questions answered for them before it's ready to indicate to you in which direction it's looking to bring this forward in terms of the next public board meeting.
Okay, would it be helpful, hurtful, or neutral if I ask Brian Quinn to circulate a draft pilot amendment, sort of just a generic document prior to your next meeting? Or is it kind of...
I would say neutral.
That would be my response.
I guess our concern is then, hopefully, you're comfortable on October 7 voting generally to authorize, would, would there be a situation where, and I'm asking this, because different boards do this differently, if you're in favor of it, would you consider authorizing the mayor to sign whatever document Mr. Quinn presents, subject to review by council, so you don't have to come back again for your November nail 16?
Because now we're getting close to the end of the year, and if I am going to be able to close a deal, I need to move forward.
Sign a contract.
The, the board has, the board has taken action before where it has made the, given the authorization to the mayor, subject to review by council. So that has happened before, and there's been other instances where the document is in hand and you don't need to do that.
Right, which is why I suggested maybe...
Right, so, so it's been done either way at times.
Okay, but it doesn't sound like it really makes, it doesn't change anything really. The vote is going to be, either we're in favor of this or not, on October 7, and the document just kind of favors it.
Yeah, right, I don't know that it helps that it would be in our hands beforehand, I mean, it would speed things up, but I don't know that it helps with the board's decision.
Right.
That's what I would call it, to be sure.
Assuming you...
But if you sent it, I guess, you know...
Yeah, assuming you were, you handled the Orange Town deal, that, that's...
I didn't handle the Orange Town one.
Oh, you didn't, okay. It's basically just an amendment to the pilot that all the entities signed, has a bunch of whereas clauses explaining why it's being amended, it says everyone, all the different entities have consented, and now therefore, the property described in Schedule A is now removed from the pilot, I mean, that's essentially...
I think the board fully understands that portion of the amendment, you know, circulating a draft letter is, I believe that we all understand that part of it.
Okay.
I think they need further discussion of council from, you term you.
Right.
That's what I would say.
I can say to you that I'm hesitant because...
I think they need further discussion of council from, you determine.
Right.
That's what I would say.
I can say to you that I'm hesitant, because it's too much of an unknown. As I said before, that Orange Town pilot amendment specifically named an entity that was purchasing, taking over.
But any entity that buys it would have to, first of all, have the financial wherewithal to buy it, and would have to propose a use that either continues an existing nonconforming use, or proposes a permitted use. So I'm not sure why that's relevant. It's, it's going to be sold to an entity that can buy it.
Well, because it's, it's a complete crapshoot on our part. If we say yes to you, all right, you've had multiple offers, maybe they'll close, maybe they won't, maybe it'll just sit there.
It's just sitting there now.
Maybe it'll get sold.
Yeah.
Maybe it won't. It's just sitting there now.
Sitting there properly maintained? I mean, I guess maintained as well.
There would be no nonconforming use at this point.
There is no.
There is no existing nonconforming use at this point. It is, it would have to be a, a conforming use, because it is sitting for more than six months.
Well, actually, the building inspector issued a memo as part of a subdivision that said the warehouse use is continuing and may continue, and it's being used right now for storage.
Storage warehousing.
That was confirmed.
In the CB zone? That was in the CB zone, huh?
Yes.
Yeah, there was a lot of confusion about what zone.
Yeah.
Your map shows it, your map shows it.
Right, it is a CB.
But there is a memo as part of the subdivision that confirmed the existing warehouse use is continuing and may continue, that was at least, the words of that memo are pretty clear. Potential purchasers are relying on building inspectors' written memos. If that's changed, that's something we would definitely need to know.
I, I will, I'll talk to Steve tomorrow.
Okay.
And I'll just let you know.
You know, it was sort of buried in the minutes, it was the memo that went into the minutes from the June twelfth meeting.
Okay.
It was an amended, there was a second version of it that said that.
Second version.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
So now, the only concern is who we could potentially be selling?
No, that's not the only concern.
No.
No.
No, but all I clearly see is how it can benefit you, I don't necessarily see how it clearly benefits us.
Avon saying in Suffolk definitely benefits.
Well, if we, if, if, just say hypothetically, we don't amend the agreement, we don't agree to it, I don't think Avon's going to pick up and move.
We may not pick up and move, but it will be a lot more difficult for us to sell the, the business.
On that one parcel?
It's significant amount of money.
To which you have multiple offers. And it's not even on the market.
It's a prime location.
That it is.
I think we hear your concerns, and we'll have to talk internally, you're going to talk internally.
Yes.
To the extent council can share with me kind of where this is heading going into October seventh, if you know, that would be helpful. If it's going to be a dramatic three to two vote at night, that's always exciting, and gives me an ulcer. But we'll see if there's any, I don't know how much further information we can share, we'll have to talk internally.
Okay.
And see where we are on that end.
Great, all right.
But if there's any other information we can provide short of who the buyer is, which I'm not sure we're at liberty to disclose, but I think we have to talk about that, you know, we, we, we tried to do this in a very systematic way over the last six months, and I understand there's some concern about the unknown, but we're, we're stuck also because of the way that pilot is structured, with the IDA owning the property. We felt this, talking to the IDA and speaking to different representatives from every entity, this seemed to be the most efficient way to be able to sell property.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night, thank you. Kathy.
Good evening, everybody. So a few things that we have coming up in the month of October. First is Saturday, September twenty eighth, Connor School's having a bike rodeo, Chief is all over that.
Right.
And Connor School, it's going to be very after three morning.
Eight, early, eight thirty is starting, which, that's the date it's starting, I agree.
So that's a Saturday, we were able to work with Westchester Medical Center and obtained one hundred and thirty-five helmets for them, so the kids are going, anyone that goes to the bike rodeo will get three year helmets, which is a nice thing for the kids at Connor School. Starting in two weeks, Yoga for Beginners will be in the community center, Monday evenings, October seventh, twenty first, twenty eighth, and November fourth, at six thirty. We have two nutrition workshops coming up, Tuesday the first, during the day, and then one in the evening, the workshop is October second, at seven P M. That's a Mexican cooking class, that wasn't on the agenda, my apologies. Walking Wednesdays is starting, so the self-guided tours are going to be October second, ninth, sixteenth, and the twenty-third, at ten A M. That's the one here around the village loop. If anyone would like to host a walking Wednesday, and be the guide for the afternoon or the morning, please let me know, we would welcome that. Halloween window painting is Saturday the twelfth, at ten A M, at the window shops. We have fifteen groups that have signed up, and we just put the notice up the other day, so we expect that to be a nice turnout, again, as it has been in the past. We work with the Chamber of Commerce with that, they have offered again, thankfully, that they will give the prizes for the kids. The Repair Cafe, as I mentioned before, it's something that the town hosts, and Suffolk is the representative for the Town around Hope, so we are excited to, to host them on Sunday the twentieth, at ten to two, in the community center. The Halloween Parade is coming up, October twenty seventh, at two P M, at Block Y. Bruce Simon, here's the agenda I reviewed. Not Just Battery Saturday is coming up, November second. I have out on the table here, by the, by the recreation office, a container for batteries, if anyone has any batteries in the little roll that you want to put in there. The Wise Beginnings is going to have a craft show at the community center on Sunday the third, at eleven o'clock, and then, believe it or not, Christmas, Saturday, December seventh, six thirty is the Christmas parade and visit Santa. And then Sunday, December eighth, will be the Pearl Harbor ceremony at two P M in the auditorium. I didn't add in here, we have Tootsie, the tickets just went on sale on Monday, and we have already halfway sold out, so if anyone's looking to go to Tootsie, the date is November twenty third, we have opened it up to Village of Suffolk residents first, and then starting on Monday, it's open up to Village of Suffolk non-residents, non-residents of Village of Suffolk. So the thirtieth will open it up, and we do expect to sell out of that one, so it's going very quickly, we're very excited for that. One item that came up, we put the information out for the yoga and for the nutrition class in these schools, we put it on the backpacks, we're getting so much want for the mayor's wellness program, so a good dilemma has coming up, and it's something that maybe we can discuss tomorrow before the, before the board meeting on next Monday. Do we want to start charging for village events? It's come up in the past, we've talked about it. The nutrition workshop is a perfect example that's coming up, and the Yoga for Beginners. Do we want to look at opening up these programs to non-residents?
I believe some non-residents are already attending, that maybe is something that we should look at for, for a charge.
Yes.
You know, I don't know how the board feels, but initially, you know, I think that non-residents should be, there should be a small fee associated with it, depending on what we're doing.
Right.
But that would be a discussion, now we should, we should definitely have.
I would agree.
I mean, are there any situations off the top of your head where non-residents attending are shutting out the village residents?
Are doing what upside?
Or maybe because more non-residents are attending, maybe it's shutting out the opportunity from village residents?
It's not necessarily shutting it out, it's Nancy Christopher, who runs the wellness program, has really come up with some great ways for people to come in, she's gotten really great attendance at these events. The senior workshops, the senior events that we have, she's turning it into a positive for the groups, that if you are not a village resident, but you are a member of the, of the village, if you are a resident of the Town around Hope, you have to join a senior group, a senior club, and that's benefiting them, and it's also benefiting us. In the past, whenever you did state for, for example, or chair exercise, or any of the programs at the center, you had to be a member of a town club. So she's benefiting the clubs by having people join that, so that's one way that they're able to do our programs, but now we're getting people that don't want to join a club, or want to come to yoga, or come to nutrition, or come to other things, which is a plus for you, Mary, that the mayor's wellness program is really, really booming. So we just have to figure out if we do want to do it for, because the, the reason I'm bringing it up, the yoga class is not for seniors specific, it is for adults. So that's where this kind of starts, do we want to?
You could, you could go back to also the, the trip, the Broadway trip, where it was open to all, you know, anyone.
Right.
And we were, the residents were getting bumped out, so then we did make that change to residents first, so maybe we could structure something depending on the, the amount of people that are in the class.
Yeah.
Suffolk residents first.
Right.
And then non-residents with an associated fee, or something like that, that's something.
How do we determine that, by the driver's license, or looking to address?
That ultimately would be the end, we try to.
Well, we make a resident card with respect to the pool.
I know, yeah, we have talked about.
So why don't we do just, if you want to go to yoga or whatever, you have to get a resident card.
Mm-hmm.
And you have to bring it with you and show it.
Yeah. We do have in that room, for those of you that don't know, we have the IDs right in our room to do. So that is an opportunity, we have all the hardware for it, we've got the badges, we could do it, we would have to set up some kind of timing to do like the passes, but I think it's an opportunity, I think we could bring revenue in and still continue doing the program. So just something, again, it kind of just came up today, because we got it on the electronic backpack, and we got a ton of calls for people that want to come to the yoga class, but we're torn on about how we structure it, so it's not too, when we have it outside at the gazebo, it's an easy fit, it's big enough, we don't really have to do any capacity, but when it gets inside, we have capacity issues and other things. So it's good problems, but those are the things that I thought I would just bring up tonight while we're on topic.
I got one question, I don't know if I should come in by you first, but the speaker for Pearl Harbor thing, did you, you think about that?
No, I haven't had anything yet.
You've had anybody in mind?
I do not. I have people in mind, but it's something that, because we can.
We can discuss that tomorrow.
Okay.
Are the people that are having inquiry, was it for the evening classes?
For the.
For the yoga for beginners?
Yeah, yeah.
It's the evening classes, yeah.
How about something like Bad the Battery Sunday, like if someone were to come in from, I don't know, you know, Airmont or something, I mean, is it open just to Suffolk residents, or?
Well, that I think we welcome, because they're coming and going, they're dropping off goodies for us to collect and get rid of.
Okay, I'm just asking, in case.
Yeah. Because that's really not something we're, like, we're not doing anything besides collecting items in. So Bruce, I think we could, you do want to open that up to anybody, correct?
Oh, a friend asked me already, and I said, I'm not going to be checking IDs. As, as you have cars, no, for, for a very simple reason, if you have cars pulling into the parking lot, we don't want any more traffic, any more slowdown than is already going to happen. So the goal is to get the cars in, take out of the cars and get them out. Adding more time to that impacts and hurts the event.
Right.
So we have to kind of make a decision, and my decision was, and, and we never did this in the past, just whoever shows up with something to drop off, let them in.
There's no money in that, like.
We are not taking a penny from any person that drops off anything.
Well, I meant, you know, when the village takes stuff to the transport point in Hill Ground, but this is not involved with that. The village does the recycling with.
That's a conversation that we should have with Charles and with Joe. I don't know what the benefit will be, except that it will lessen our garbage load, which we pay by the ton. So there may not be a straight cash payment to the village for what is recycled, but there will be a lessening of the outlay on the backend. So there is a plus.
And protect the environment.
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Kathy, could we please make sure that, like, all of these events get onto Facebook, because we don't have any of these events listed.
Right.
Coming up, you know, should do it complete through the end of the year.
Yeah.
I think we really have to, yeah, to step up the marketing of the, of the campaigns, the Facebook campaign, or the constant contact, I see that the Town around Hope puts out like one every Friday.
Every Friday.
They put one, I'm not saying to do that, I'm just, you know, making, looking at it, an observation, they, they put something out every Friday with all of their events, I think for the week.
Okay.
So I know I get it every Friday, and.
Right, the news, I get that as well. Okay, we can, we can definitely come up with another schedule.
And what about the Winter Clifford Theater? Is that going to move forward?
I decided not to go forward with that, that wasn't something we budgeted this year, so we're not going to go forward with it. The amount of money was very, I thought, you know, a good amount to bring a program in, but the late game, I didn't want to even attempt to bring it in this year. Clifford Theater, I do have to say, I'm so proud, that we are almost at a zero balance, which in my, my years, and many years before that, it's never happened. There's two amounts that are going to be returned this coming week, Michael, you'll probably get two, two things down from Nancy this week, so right, two dollar amounts, one is a balance that was returned, a deposit, I should say, and then one, there was another amount that should not have been charged against Clifford, but regardless, we are at such a minimal balance, minimal dollar amount, that I'm going to keep it as is, so we see how well we did this year, and then we can look to do this program next year. So we're not going to, I'm not going to pursue that, that opportunity.
So you don't have a lot of money in Clifford?
We have.
I thought you were flush.
We were, we were flush, so the way Clifford works, if we have a ninety-five hundred dollar store, and Michael, please correct me if that.
Let me, let me explain how it works. In, in the budget for the Clifford Theater, you provide for the expenditures, the village spending up to nine thousand dollars for Clifford. What happens is they get donations and contributions, whatever, for the Clifford Theater during the year, as Kathy mentioned, and most years, you're getting about half of that, maybe four thousand, forty-five hundred, if you're lucky. Sometimes you're eligible for a state grant, like a member item of two or three thousand dollars that helps as well. So you never really cover all the costs, but this year came very close, within a few hundred dollars, maybe a little less if we have to give some of it back, but the bottom line is, it's not where it brought in more money than what you anticipated to spend. So the benefit here is if this money comes in, it helps offset that cost, so even though you raised the money originally in taxes, it now goes back into the general fund and helps for next year, when you're doing Clifford Theater for nine thousand.
Okay. And then the other item on my agenda is the resolution to authorize the fireworks from Suffolk Day from this past Saturday, so I don't have a copy of the resolution, I don't know if there's any, any on that.
I have it, yeah, we'll approve, we'll, we'll vote on this on Monday, at the meeting.
And I would like to say for Suffolk Day, I want to thank everybody that helped out underneath the tent, it was a wonderful effort from everyone, we really appreciated the help. As you can see, our rec board members are very few and far between, but who was there really helped out so much, so we appreciate, I really appreciated your help. Mr. Curly, I appreciate your help on your whole other food tent, so thank you for that. But Suffolk Day was fantastic, the evening went from beginning, the day went from the morning to the very end of the night, flawless, so Chief, we did a beautiful job.
Thank you, now Kathy, we show us.
Yeah, it was a great day.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was, thank you to Recreation and everyone involved, EPW did an outstanding job, Police Department, EPW always does an outstanding job, you know, they really do. Police, fire, Recreation, everyone that was there, the board, they did a great job.
It really was, it was a community.
Mike Curly, actually, I forget Mike Curly.
People that worked at Food Tent.
Mike, uh, Mike Moon and Mike Two. M Square over there.
M Square.
M Square.
Also the street parade the week before was great, too, I really enjoyed it.
Yeah, and the street fair, excellent.
Yes. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Chief Osborne.
That's, I know you guys are used to talking about outreach and social media, I think one of the things we may want to push is, one thing we haven't really done, I think the last post B I was like a year and a half ago, on Instagram, I think we may want to set up a new page, maybe called Suffolk Village, I'd be glad to do it, to set you guys up, because that hits a whole other crowd than Facebook.
Can you, can I get, yes, I would love to do that.
I, I think the old one was Village, The Village of Suffolk, which was a while ago, I don't know who's the password, who had said, I know Wesley was helping out, but I think it was taken over a couple of times. I think we. I think we should really start a new one and I have no problem. I just think it's time, because it's, I think it's something we could just branch out to all different groups.
And we can have different users, right?
Yeah.
Different administrators or whatever they call.
You can. I think I'd be happy to set up, sit down a couple, set it up with you.
Right.
I've done it for other police departments. I set up most of the department Facebook pages in the county. They come to me, I set them up as a courtesy, the whole thing, get it going. Our page is extremely active, obviously. We have an Instagram page on the police department that I use. So if you'd like me to do it, I think I would be more, I'd be more than willing and happy to do it for the Village of Suffering.
Yeah, so let's sit down, Kathy, and I'll sit down with you and Chief.
Yeah.
And maybe Nancy, because she really handles a lot of that.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I just figured as well.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I'll help out whatever I can do.
Appreciate it.
No problems, the least we could do. I'm going to give you my report Monday, so you can take any more of your time in repeating what I'm going to say now Monday. Just basically a lot of stuff going on. We made a lot of major events. The fire parade, we took care of twenty-seven traffic posts, forced a fire to set us a lot of help. It is a massive undertaking for the police department, because we're the ones responsible for the shutdown, the security, the road closures. Officers did a great job. Safety is a street fair. Suffering Day were great. Bike rodeo is this Saturday. Kathy, thanks, open the sound helmets. I was at Pecan School today, we're going to be, the police department is running the bike rodeo part for the kids. We had a little water rescue, our officers with the fire department. I just want to mention that because in all, in all, one of our officers out patrol was Sergeant Smith. She was out patrol when a person walking in the street had flagged at us and I think somebody's in the water. And Mary, you came up right with me and saw, there's no way we really saw that person where the person was after you flagged down. So we got a missed you call with the embankment, got down there, got the person out of the water security, fire department came in, helped us get the person up, stepped in a bee's nest while we were down, not a nest, like a hive, and then everybody got the hell, like a cartoon, in about one second, everybody wrapped up. So that happened, you saw it, we were watching, like a swarm bees. And, and we had their hockey going on, very full, season, we're having full teams. Dairy Dance is coming up, Christmas Parade, Toy Drive. That's on top of the normal calls, multiple arrests, domestics, we had three or four domestic arrests the last couple of days. Some in court as we speak, they were making them up. So we're basically on top of this. We're still providing the twenty-four seven protection, responding to calls and making stops, making stops. We've definitely had a exceptionally busy month, PDY stuff. Instead of repeating all of the other things, I just want to give you...
There you go.
...an overlay. And if you have any questions, please, over here.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
I have a question actually about the bike rodeo. What age group is that aimed at?
See, it's pretty much geared for elementary, so all elementary kids. We did it last three years, I think we've had kindergarten, even younger. We've had siblings that are two, three years old on auto bikes, up to fifth, sixth grade. So I think like Jack's age group, that's right up the valley.
Jack's older, he's in sixth now, yeah.
At six, yeah, six, I'm sorry, sixth grade. But some of the kids did, we do get a lot of kids that call the kids, still. We checked the bikes to them in the helmets, we, you know, we made sure they get their proper...
I wrote it for us last year.
You did, you came up with a session, you did.
I had to write it for us.
I was certified as a bike officer, I was the first one in two thousand and four and I was a sergeant, what I had called, and I still back there doing stuff. I think it's a good service to offer for the community of kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Janito.
Yes. Mayor, the first thing is a resolution amending the current budget, the nineteen-twenty budget with per capita state aid. At the time we adopted the budget, we still believed per capita state aid was going to be continued. It's not a major amount, it's ten thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, but the state discontinued, the governor discontinued, it was not authorized. So now we have the aim, which is about eighty-eight thousand, we still get that, but the per capita portion was discontinued by the state. And our resolution is just amending this current budget to say we're going to use fund balance to cover that difference. The next one is a old capital project that had a very minor balance left on it, it was one thousand, one thirty-eight, that was actually due to cover that project and we're looking to close that. It's a very old capital project, as I mentioned, from two thousand and five. So this will transfer one thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars from the general fund to that project and close that project out. The next resolution is slightly different, but it also involves a capital project that originally was specified for the refurbishment of water well number three, and the amount was fifteen thousand dollars. And we issued debt, bands, bond anticipation notes for that project, but as it turned out, as I spoke with Stanley Dubrinsky, our water department head, essentially what had happened back then, well water number three was producing a particular level, I'm not sure if it was chlorides or something else, that was too high. And they believed that by refurbishing the well in a certain way, that could fix that. It turned out that the levels got worse and to the point where even that fix wouldn't have fixed it. The problem is that when the resolution to authorize the debt for that project was passed, it was very specific to water well number three pump. And Stanley said, "There isn't a need for that anymore." So since those notes were all paid off by the water fund, then that money can go back into the water fund and be used for a capital improvement through the water fund, fifteen thousand dollars. So this is transferring the fifteen thousand, fund the capital projects fund over to the water fund. And I'll leave it up to the water department head and Charles to decide if there's something they can do by the end of the fiscal year to utilize that money for water improvements, water system improvements.
Is there outstanding debt underneath that?
No, that debt was, no, it was only a note that was issued for fifteen thousand dollars. It was paid off over five years. So there's no outstanding debt at all on that. If there was outstanding debt, we'd have to transfer that money over to the debt service fund.
That's what I was thinking, that you want to pay it off.
The next one is authorizing Maria Duffy of my office and Lynn Bryant of the village clerk's office to attend the state retirement system seminar October twentieth. This particular seminar will bring both of them up. Lynn Bryant is involved in payroll and Maria's involved in the payment of the benefits through the treasurer's office. So this is to be held in Pomona, New York. There's no cost for registration, so the only thing might be the travel back and forth, the mileage on the vehicle. And that's asking for that permission. There was also listed on my agenda, the cell phone use policy, but that actually doesn't belong to me. I don't know if that's somebody else that offered that?
Yeah, that's, I guess that's not on yours. All right. Thank you. I skipped over Charles, I'm sorry, Charles. I'm sorry, I just rolled right over.
Good evening, everybody. So we have, I'd like to provide an update on some projects that will be starting shortly. We have the twenty-nineteen right away disturbance, I'm sorry, right away improvement project that involves new curbs on Lancaster and some ADA ramps on Foxwood. And that is tentatively scheduled to start next week. And we have the Phase Ten roadway improvement project, the milling is tentatively set to start on the fourteenth of October, with the paving to start the following week on the twenty-first. The Wayne Avenue sidewalk and curb project currently actively working with the DOT to get a permit. And we have, as everyone knows, we have selected a contractor, so working with the contractor and the DOT to move that permit ahead. So there's a couple other things that came up this, within the last week or so. One, I think Moore had inquired about trees over by, by Curly's. And so anyway, so we have...
Not Curly's trees.
I don't want it to be on camera.
It's not his trees.
No, no, no.
It's her lot trees.
Absolutely.
They're dead.
So anyway, so we have a work order in place, we'll be taking care of that. There was some discussion and some, apparently had, the village has been approached by some community groups that may have an interest in adopting various parking lots to keep them...
Joe mentioned that at the last meeting.
So something maybe the board would like to consider, provide more information on that.
Wasn't Joe going to give us a list of areas that he felt would be good for adopt a spot kind of things?
Well, we, yeah, we can provide that to you, sure.
I think initially he suggested the municipal parking lot, right?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. That would be helpful in this area.
That's what we're thinking.
Yeah.
Is that a list we can get before meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I'll get, I'll get together.
You know, those same type of trees, I believe it's the same type of trees down at the municipal lot by the baseball field, there's like four or five of them dead back there, too. I noticed a lot of suffering dead.
In the F lot? In the F lot? In the parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, that kind of funky, funky trees, the ones on the island?
Yeah, they're dead.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or three-quarter dead. And then back along where the embankment is, I feel like there's one very tall dead tree.
You said the embankment?
No, at the back part of the parking lot.
Oh, the rail guy.
Yeah.
So the, one of the other items that came up was the restrooms, it was one the residents had brought up, inquired about restrooms last meeting, and I know Moore had inquired about it as well. So we're going to look at doing a short term and a long term plan, talk to our, you know, to Joe and see if we can get our manpower to get in there. So initially, pressure wash everything down and most likely epoxy, the floor and portion of wall, you know, maybe halfway up or, you know, take a closer look at that. And then try to analyze and work out some type of long term plan, what we could, we could do in terms of either updating it, improving the appearance, the condition, or possibly even expanding it.
Yeah, but it's also just like the regular maintenance. You know, when baseball season's in effect, those bathrooms are used constantly, or I guess when football season is going, they're used again, and it was pretty nasty.
All right, well, we'll, we'll make it out, see if we can improve that situation.
Like, is it our responsibility to keep them clean or is it a...
Well, during the baseball season, football season, you know, we do go in there and provide toilet paper, paper towels and whatnot. We do count on the baseball people to kind of keep it up a little bit. We do go in there, probably don't go in there on a daily basis, you know, it comes down to, you know, manpower issues for the most part.
I have to say, during the baseball season, the Little League cleans those bathrooms regularly.
Cleans the bathrooms. Yeah, that was the other thing that I questioned.
And they can be a responsibility, is it? And yes, and the public works supplies, the paper, soap.
Right.
And that, but it's, you know, if you have an event where other people might be opening up and using them, I mean, they're locked normally, so somebody has to have a key to get in.
Right, and, you know, Little League and, you know, football have keys. And it's, you know, it's, when you have a lot of people, you know, if you have, have some type of vent at your house, right, you have, you know, quite a few people, it's, it's tough to keep it up on, during that event.
And it's also, if you go there and see it, it's old fashioned. It's an old wooden, basically a shed with toilet and a sink on both sides. It's not like what you see in a more modern prefab recreation bathrooms.
Now, Charles, you had mentioned recently a good idea as an alternative, which was like a prefab structure.
Yeah, yeah, they, we, you know, we can look into that. You know, Michael just mentioned it. I don't, you know, we'd have to, obviously export a cost, but, you know, they essentially could, you know, prepare the foundation and you have a crane, they lift it off the truck, drop it down in, you, you know, obviously connect all the plumbing and the, you know, all the trim and stuff and you're off, right? So, I mean, that's one option.
Maybe for the next, next budget cycle?
Yeah, yeah, we could look at what the cost is and see if it makes sense, you know.
I think if you're going to do anything short term, you should try to make it clear that that is a short term and that you're looking at something else longer term.
Yeah.
You know, just like, just like patching on pillow crests, people thought, oh, that was it, we're not going to pave it, but...
No, the prefab buildings are, if that's what you're talking about, they're, they're like, they're like a house, they're built...
No, I know that. I was talking about, you said that you might go in there and epoxy floor.
The lower part of the...
Well, if we do that, we should just try to make that clear to public, that's a temporary requirement.
I only saw one side of it, but I think if it just got cleaned...
Outwashed.
Cleaned, it would be fun.
Okay.
You know, I don't think anybody expects a glamorous bathroom, but at least one you'd be, you know...
Wouldn't be going to...
Willing to go into.
If you epoxy the floor, it's going to be easier to clean.
Yeah, it's really, because of maintenance, it's a little bit easier to maintain. Yeah, right. That's the thought, you know.
Sure.
Okay. So the item on the agenda is flood plane, or flood insurance, rather, for the wastewater treatment. So it's something that it, I'd like to be able to, see if I can get to you with Mike Janito and Pete Karate and discuss options. What, what has occurred is we've gotten notice from FEMA regarding a very old project that's almost ten years old. And we have some options that we need to discuss and see what would be, you know, the best option moving forward, and then make a recommendation to the board. So if I can get to you with Michael and, I already...
I know, I think we explored that once before, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, matter of fact, I did call Scott last week, and it seemed like it goes back to twenty-twelve. So if we were, you know, so, you know, all those numbers and, and...
Has to be less now.
Yeah, yeah, it's more than five years, so everything has to be, everything has to be redone and, you know, what we might need to do as well, if we're going to pursue the assurances, we might, we probably would need to redo the elevation certificates, that's a requirement. So although they were done back in twenty-twelve, we would need to redo...
That was costly also, wasn't it?
Yeah, there's a cost factor to that. I don't recall exactly what it was at the time, but...
How do we determine the elevation certificates? Like, how many do we need?
Well, this is the thing, this particular issue is related to just the wastewater. So it wouldn't be other facility, other village facilities, it wouldn't be, for example, would not be water treatment, it would not be the DPW garage, it would not be Village Hall, you know, that type of thing.
But it's not going to flood plain, is that...
Well, no, it's just because of this one event from twenty-ten. It's a kind of a, it's a kind of a convoluted situation. So we had a, we had a flood event in twenty-ten. We had received about thirty, under thirty-three thousand dollars for that event. They were just catching up on it. Somehow it was originally considered a large project and it was, it was re-characterized as a small project. As a result of that, they did pay us immediately, but then we didn't have insurance, so it just gets, it's quite, quite crazy, but something that I think we sort of virtually have two couple options to, to look at and see which would be the, the best option for the village.
In 2010, we weren't classified in, as being in a flood plain?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
No, we're, wasn't in a flood zone? And then they reclassified us to a flood plain?
Well, no, it was always a flood plain. You're probably, maybe thinking of floodway. Maybe thinking of floodway, 'cause that was something that, uh, pretty much was more pronounced than this last, uh, mapping, which is, goes back to 2014.
Oh, maybe that's...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, okay, thanks.
Fred, really, is it, do you have any information on the grant update for Dazney?
Basically, it's almost $250,000. We received a, a letter from, or email from Dazney indicating that the payment has been sent for processing and we should receive a check on or about the September 30th.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, the attorney, the notice of the rebid for, renotice of the public hearing.
Rob? Yeah, Amy and I discussed a couple of local laws. One is, uh, regarding time limit for, uh, parking areas and provide for additional handicap space in the Central Business District. Uh, the other is regarding passenger loading zones in the Central Business District. And the last one is about idling parked vehicles in the Central Business District. The one, the versions that you have are gonna be tweaked a little bit, but, um, I forgot. I do realize if we do this Monday, it'll be the following Monday, but we'll have ready to roll that following Monday. And I'll discuss with Amy, and I'll send it around to everybody. Um, and that's just to set the hearing. The hearing will be that night though, just to set the hearing.
Okay.
And, uh, circulate. The Lang, uh, matter, I sent, uh...
We set.
Right. The, uh, Lang Consulting, I, I guess kind of in line with what, uh, Rich Ellsworth was here on. I guess the possibility, uh, the board maybe wants to entertain the possibility of creating a floating zone or a...
Yes.
So, uh, John Lang has provided a, um, a proposal and I think it's with all your backup documents. And, uh, so if the board is interested in doing that, it's really reasonable, I think, 'cause I think he's done a lot of the work already. Um, and then, you know, I, certainly myself and, and Ralph can work with him on finalizing it.
So, that segues way, segues into something else that's happening here that most recently occurred, that the MTA is trying to, um, I guess petition or acquire the Suffering Train Station. So, if the MTA is, is successful with obtaining the Suffering Train Station from New Jersey Transit, they look favorably upon economic development in villages that run along the rail and implement TODs at the same time. So, the western, uh, the western portion, west of the Hudson portion of the MTA has, will be, um, capital projects of roughly around $180 million. And they're looking at Suffering to revamp the station if we are able to provide them some kind of detail. We already have a TOD in place. If we create another TOD or a floating zone, the walkability of the village, um, residential components, uh, the safe streets component, um, that we have to talk about after that, we started, was it called Safe Streets?
Safe Streets Policy.
Safe Streets Policy. Um, so they look favorably upon all of those different items and where the MTA would invest their dollars into refurbishing stations, making them handicap accessible. Um, so I think it's a big benefit for the Village of Suffering to possibly move forward with John Lang Consulting, trying to, um, create a floating, floating zone or a TOD, which would show good faith to the MTA, um, in regards to the Village of Suffering and the economic growth and development.
Right. Well, we have, we have the floating zone for the TOD.
Right.
So, you know, at least there's that.
We have that.
Along the lines of, you know, again, maybe special permit type thing or, you know?
Not a special permit, specific to, um, that's the comprehensive planning and everything I just said, uh, floating zone or, or TODs.
Right, and have John, uh, you know, propose something that we can work with.
Right. Correct, uh, that's something really to consider.
So, am I hearing that on Monday, there should be a resolution authorizing this, or no?
If the board is interested, that's what it's, I think he estimated it would cost $1,600.
Yes, you have the, I feel like I have it here.
Yeah, I think it was in the back there.
I haven't yet. That's a question that I provided, the filing proposal to create a, you guys had it, right?
I think so.
Floating zone for the village for the additional development as part of a transit-oriented development initiative. And it was a work, $160 bucks an hour, $1,600. It's something, like I said, that the MTA will look favorably upon at the same time of everything else that we have done here in the village. That may be a great benefit to the village in, in transportation and the community.
So, this is just really authorized proposal, right?
Well, it's authorized, he needs to get started, if he hasn't started.
Now, you mentioned that, uh, the MTA is looking to purchase the train station from New Jersey Transit, but what's in it? Either A, for the MTA to purchase it, if it's already being essentially maintained or not maintained by another agency, or B, what's in it for New Jersey Transit to give it up? In other words, why would this transaction necessarily happen?
The reason being is that New Jersey Transit operates and owns one facility out of New Jersey that happens to be the Village of Suffering Train Station.
Yes.
So, the MTA is looking upon it like they're not maintaining the station properly.
Okay.
It's not, uh, handicap accessible now. We have to take taxpayer dollars that everyone pays into MTA taxes and we have to tell our residents to go to Ramsey 17 for accessibility and parking.
Sure, I see what you're saying.
At the same time, so, and, and tomorrow I'll be going down to the public hearing and I was invited to speak on behalf of the Village of Suffering, um, along with the County Exec's Office to, you know, strengthen transportation in, in Rockland County and Suffering itself.
I just wanted to understand the, what's behind all this, if that makes sense.
They do pick it up from here and go all the way up to Port Jervis and...
MTA, MTA, yes, right.
No, I knew that Suffering was part of the New Jersey side, but I just wasn't sure why New Jersey would want, would be willing to give it up.
We had special counsel here today and toured with her, the facility, the train station, the town, the walkability, the parking, um, the TOD. We did all of that today. And tomorrow we'll be down in the, in the city of Two Broadway before the committee, the full MTA committee.
Sure.
The full MTA board.
Sounds good. Update on 27 Hillside, that's the...
Yeah.
Anselmo's property. Um, we got a trial scheduled in the justice court here, uh, I think it's October 17. Um, after that, we're successful. We, uh, we have certain options which we can discuss in terms of doing the cleanup again, which we've done three or four times maybe already, I don't know. He, uh, if you recall, uh, the property owner filed bankruptcy right before there was gonna be a tax sale in May. And today we've got some further information, um, what happened. When you file bankruptcy, you have to do certain things. There's counseling you have to go for, there are certain deadlines they have to meet. And, um, Legal Aid Society of Rockland County represented the property owner. Uh, they submitted papers today because the trustee in bankruptcy was going to dismiss the bankruptcy and say, he's not cooperating, forget it. This, the legal aid filed a motion that gave us some information on what's going on and basically said, look, I've been trying to reach him. He finally did go to some of the counseling, a little swamp counseling, uh, and they asked for additional time. I checked on the website today, there's a, it's called Pacer website for bankruptcy, for federal cases, and, um, it's on for October, those are the two dates, I'm mixing up, so I don't remember straight. There's a meeting of creditors, I'll speak to Ralph about this, uh, October 10th. Uh, and our trial's October 17th. Uh, the, the two are not related, but there's a meeting of creditors on October 10th, so I don't know if we wanna send something there. I really don't practice in bankruptcy courts, I don't know a lot about it, but...
I just don't understand what this was, what this statement was saying for us. How would that impact us?
Well, he acknowledges that, that he's not allowed to live there and he acknowledges, you know, that, he's basically, what those papers say is, you know, he's living in a van or something because the county's not permitting, come on. For the Village of Suffering just means that the bankruptcy continues. So, we have some judgments against him, so they can't be afford. But more globally, uh, it meant that, um, the tax sale couldn't take place. That's really, that was really the, the most benefit to the property owner. When he filed bankruptcy, it stopped the tax sale.
And so this would allow him to continue to hold that motion, right?
Well, this, the, the trustee in bankruptcy said, I'm gonna dismiss it. This is saying, please don't dismiss it. You know, he's getting his stuff, he's getting his act together and now it's on for October 10th.
What would bankruptcy mean in terms of the, the property?
Right now it's just a delay. Ultimately, he'll have to owe the taxes and, you know, again, it depends on what happens. If he gets the money and pays the taxes, pays the taxes, but, um, it doesn't wipe that out. You know, ultimately, it's, it's really a matter of timing, when it would be, if, if it happens.
I think I was hearing from the Department of Health that the opportunity for us to declare the property unfit for habitation is not going to move forward, right?
Well, it would be us, it would be them, yeah.
Right, so they're not moving forward with that, which means that though he's not able to live in the house, he's still able to bring items onto the property and now we're stole because of this, is that correct?
Well, not necessarily. We can, we can talk about that, I wouldn't get into all the details at this point, but it's, you know, in terms of what we're doing now, um, the trial, we're gonna have the trial. Again, there's a provision in the code that we've used before where we can clean it up. We can speak to the board about whether we're gonna go that route or another route, um, in the future. But, you know, anticipating that he would be convicted at trial, that helps. Either, either avenue would go down, either presenting it to the board or, or going to, uh, Supreme Court of the city, whatever.
Are there any additional violations that have occurred in addition to the charges he's facing and tried?
Well, it's the same, it's the same condition, I mean, you know, you could go with every...
It's still ongoing, is that, is that correct? Is he still getting violations?
We're, we're taking our lead from Rob. He has the same violation that continues over and over.
So, it's a continuance of the same violation, not new violations, okay.
Is, are we entitled to essentially continually violate him though every day or every week or some other interval?
You could, you could. It, it complicates things in the, in court, you know, because it keeps, keeps going on, it keeps going. So, you know, it, it, again, we haven't, we've been paid, we get judgment upon judgment. All we get is money judgment downstairs, right? So, even if we violate him 20 times, you know, it's more effective to get at least the conviction on it, the current condition, and again, then, then take appropriate remedies. The court down, say, make a point downstairs. The justice court here can go no further than finding. So, well, community service or, but, you know, can't, it can't order him to clean it up, it can't, you know? So, you kinda wanna, if we can, have a finding there and then kinda use that.
So, ours is on the 10th then?
No, ours is on the 17th.
17th.
This is, this is not, you know, it's, it's really of little significance to us. You know, o- other than the ancillary, you know, if the property did go for a tax sale, that would probably not be a bad thing for the village.
Right.
At the same time, hypothetically now, just speaking completely hypothetically, the property is, is somewhere in the neighborhood of what, $200,000 in arrears, somewhere in that general ballpark, right?
I don't think for taxes though.
What do you mean, village taxes?
Not just village, but just arrears taxes overall. I think it's somewhere...
I don't know.
Our taxes, you don't have to worry about our taxes, but...
Yeah, I'm not talking about what's, I understand that we are whole, but I'm saying that as far as if it were to go through a tax sale, the taxes that are owed on it, whoever were to buy it at such an auction, if it eventually got to that point. You know, I just can't even imagine someone wanting such a burden, is what I'm saying. It's so far in arrears, is my point.
Yeah, I, I don't know if the number is that high, it could be...
I think it's in the neighborhood of that.
I don't know.
It may not be exactly 200,000, but it's something like 185,000, something like that. It's in that ballpark, which, you know, I mean, would be a big hurdle for somebody to purchase the house for more than, you know, I don't know, $50,000 or something, 'cause they'd have this big expense and then they'd still be liable to clean it up or whatever, you know, property's in disrepair. Nobody would want such a property, is my point. I'm just throwing that out there, I'm not speaking from specific knowledge of what it would sell for or anything like that. I'm just hypothesizing, that's all.
Right, and again, that would, at this point, because of the bankruptcy, that's a little further down the road, so...
Yeah, that's a good point. Okay. Yeah, for, um, okay. Moore, do you have anything? Trustees, uh, comment? Good?
Good.
Mr. Hagan?
I, it's an old comment. A, a lot of people in, where I live in Westwood are talking to me about that chocolate factory parking there 24/7. Nothing's ever sounded about it, it's very dangerous, plus the people that go in need, Chestnut double park. So, can we get something done? Can I, do you want me to get a petition? Do you guys want me to, uh, burn the building down?
If that's referred to me.
Let me ask you this, Rob, can we add that? 'Cause we're, we're adding, we don't have to just contain a local law, 'cause it's really modifying the schedule of parking, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, add what?
Add the area in front of the chocolate factory, which is...
One Ramapo or something like that.
All right, hold on, the chief, so, the, the issue here at hand is that outside the chocolate factory on Ramapo Avenue, directly out front, that we would like to eliminate parking there. Do you see that as an issue in traffic safety where they're able to park there?
No, it's traffic, looking at traffic safety, 'cause I'm down in all the time. Actually, I came out of DPW today, up the other way to go down to the stop, sign down on Wolfbee. No, and it's, you have to go around them and you basically have to go on the other lane to get around it.
Exactly.
So, I have no problem with that, because the reality is, you go down the rest of Ramapo Avenue and there's no parking there anyway, on the right side or the southbound side. So, that's, that's why I don't have a problem with it. I was gonna, I have no problem with that. That's, that's really up to the board on a police angle. If you, basically, I never understood why it was there anymore. I mean, I understood because of the business, but there's no parking and it's signed the rest of your way down.
Right.
So, that was pretty obvious.
And that's only from Pa, is that Pa?
Yeah, it's from, uh, Chestnut, between Chestnut and Park, that's it.
Chestnut to Park, no parking, can we add that to the public hearing?
Yeah, we can, we can.
Schedule a public hearing.
Well, we haven't, I'm sorry, we haven't finalized law. Is that still CB?
That's GB.
I don't see, so, that, this was specific to CB. So, we could talk tomorrow.
I don't know what time that is.
I'm not sure.
But what we're doing is we're modifying the, the schedule of what, so we could look at it like that, expanding it to like, you're thinking more of a versus focusing on the area around the shelter.
I think the street, also, there's parking, there, they have a lot on Park Ave.
Right.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Park Place, West Park. And also the Wolf here, when you come down, that hard left, that's their property. So, you have all that gravel area, that's all by them as well, so they have their own parking. So, it's not an issue of, yeah, I can everywhere to park. I'm not sure if it's customers who's out there, but I do agree, it is, it could definitely be a problem. If you get a truck coming around, a small truck, you have to go...
Into the other lane.
Yeah, you absolutely do, I still have to add to it.
And, Frank, to your point, we have had residents ask to...
Okay, so we'll look at that and see what we can do.
Yeah, we can, you know, we can add, and either make it a separate... Again, I gotta look at the details of this, 'cause I think it was all specific to CB. If it is, we can just do a different local law.
All right.
Steve?
I have nothing specific for today.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah, I've got a few items. One thing that we brought up previously, and it's kind of, I think, Frank, you're not only talking about those two parking spots, but I think you mentioned, we approached Chestnut, but, um, we talked about safety concerns around the train station and the shelter and the foot traffic. I, now that I'm actually taking the train every day, I see it even more so. I'm even more concerned about it. So, you know, I think, I think maybe we should talk about what we wanna do or decide not to do anything, but I think, you know, given that we, we didn't have workshops over the summer, I think that's part of the reason why we, um, we didn't get to talk about this sufficiently in the last couple of months, but, um, I think we should come up with some, some solution around making that a little bit safer. And on the point about the MTA possibly taking over our station and investing, maybe we could look again at that walkway going over Arm Jav.
I expressed that today too, the special counsel that we were with. They said that was something in regards to, um, ridership, like the number of passengers or the number of users. That's how they base that decision, on building like overpasses and underpasses, the necessity, the need for it itself. But we did discuss that, it was a very valid point. And going back to safe streets that Kathy and Nancy had, um, spoke about maybe last month we met. Maybe it's something that we should look at a little more closely, traffic calming and safe streets, which the MTA would also look favorably upon. So, it all ties into...
Do we have any kind of numbers of the passengers, uh, embarking, disembarking from the Suffering Train Station?
No, we don't. I don't, but, uh, we were talking about that also in regards to the ridership. Like NJT would have that information, they would know. have that information, they would know.
We were clearly a major hub on that one.
Right, so a lot of times we have to send people to Ramsey, Ramsey 17, for accessibility, for parking, you know, and more convenience.
Our parking statistics have increased considerably, but we don't know necessarily, because people could be walking, could be dropped off, could be giving a bike, so we can't say for sure what the ridership is.
Just from the parking.
But that's part of the safety issue, is there's a lot of people walking.
Right.
A lot of people getting picked up underneath the trestle there. You know, people are free to just walk across there.
Also, I did recommend a parking study, I guess two months ago, and Bruce actually made mention that we had parking studies conducted and traffic surveys, and we did pull all of those out, and the newest one was probably, I would say 2010, 2012. So it's, you know, it's seven, eight years, 10 years old already, that, you know, the undertake, and look at that, that might be something we should look at, or just start with the safe streets, see what safe streets recommends, be a safe street community, and then take it from there if necessary, do a traffic or parking study, and if you can isolate it in the areas of do, you know, the CB zone itself, and the CB and the GB, you know, but you're right.
I mean, the Sheldon's, you know, gradually filling up, and, you know, I see people just going down the stairs and walking right across and scaling that gray wall, which to me is insane, but people do it.
Joe, didn't we talk about once putting up a fence, a barrier on, under the, under the trestle to prevent people from crossing the street?
Yeah, a brief discussion on that, on what we could do.
The guardrails.
Yeah, it seems like we might be limited on what we could do, but I'm sure we come up with something. The other thing is, since you are talking about this now, as part of our right-of-way improvement project, I did throw a ADA ramp on Chestnut. So I have, if we did come up with something, though, we'd have to make a decision quickly, because the contract is going to be coming in the next few, couple weeks. I did have one ADA ramp on Chestnut that if we could identify a location within the next couple weeks, week and a half or so, we could have that as part of this contract.
And what about, I know we spoke about it, I don't remember what it was, Chief, maybe you could help us out with the crosswalk on Chestnut, somewhere in the vicinity of Sheldon toward the park.
Yeah, I think the issue right there, and I think, Paul, I think we talked about this, I believe, we have the issue, I think, the biggest issue, crosswalks are supposed to, I believe, have an opening when you, like if you're walking down, if you go on Washington Avenue by Wolf Be, it's put the one over there. Basically, there's a ramp that comes out like a sidewalk.
The curb cut.
Right, so it's a curb cut. And they'll have a curb cut. That was one issue. Second issue was visibility, because let's think when people have asked for stop signs on Maplewood coming around the bend, if you don't have the proper visibility to the stop sign, you're going to cause more of an issue, because someone's going to come around and get a false sense of security, walking across and get clipped because the people are not going to be able to see the stop sign that quick. I think that was the issue. As you come up onto the bridge, Mayor, it's tough to see, there's a lot going on that bridge, but I agree, Paul, we watch it tilt, people come out of the building, they shoot right across the road. If there's any kind of a barrier, which I think would be like, I think we're going to, we're trying to place this, you have one, anywhere we can basically have them go without, with coming down the barrier would make it much easier for us. Just for instance, I think we have to sort of guide them, which in regards, we have nothing, or they're just going to keep taking off, and we're not going to be able to stop unless we have somebody standing there and just run against them. So I think that's the easiest, if any kind of barrier we can use, or think of, that would be awesome.
Could we actually look at, since we've been receiving so many complaints, the PD, look at traffic conditions and parking conditions on Chestnut in particular?
Of course.
In and around the, from, I don't want to single anyone out, but from Lafayette to Pat Malone Drive.
Yeah, you're talking about, you're talking about the, better utilize the parking you're saying, or what are you most looking for?
I'm looking for double parking, illegally parked cars, parking in the loading, no standing zone, the fire zone there, and the loading zone.
Absolutely, because it's funny, today, the first time I saw it, and I'm down every day, I saw a truck pass Tiger Chef, go down and park down by the ball field, and use the portable jacket, I guess, like, lift and walk the stuff back.
Up there, up, under the back, under the?
Never saw it. I never saw it.
He must have got a summons over there.
I think, we could hit him, I know we hit him, so. I broke this, so that's what happened.
Yeah, because there, some of the trucks park on the wrong side of the road.
Totally, totally. We've actually worked several, went across, I don't want to give you the ticket, but we've been telling them, we did give them warning, I think it's fair to give them warning the first time, explain, you can't do this, and that at that point, they come back, they're going to get it.
You want to seek compliance?
That's all we're trying to do. Once again, for safety, because you come up onto the bridge, you got a truck near the lane, as dangerous as it is coming up, and you're swerving up the lane, Chestnut is tight as it is, you get a couple of cars, it's tight.
Does anybody know where the school buses pick up, or like anybody that lives on that part of Chestnut or lives in the Sheldon, I mean, are they picking up on Orange or are they picking up?
I'm going to say, you know, the funniest thing, I just had a discussion today with the school district, called me something else, asked about the Sheldon, about the, how many kids come out there, not many kids though. So I believe, if there is, I think it's Orange Ave. I don't think they're coming, I don't think so. And I could find that out, because I just helped with something else today, another issue.
And is the school bus used to stop outside the parking authority on Chestnut?
That's pretty much, they stay Lafayette, or go to the Westwood, and I think they may stop at Chestnut, just make the first turn light.
Maybe the other route.
But I don't think they're not going Tiger Chef, but I can check that too, about everyone that needs.
I was just thinking that, you know, if we did think we needed a crosswalk across Chestnut, maybe it's a school crossing, and maybe it's got a flashing yellow, flashing light with a yellow sign that says, you know, school crossing, and maybe people are more apt to respond to that and slow down a little bit, I'm just.
Maybe we'd probably have to lose a couple of parking spots on both sides to give that visibility to put the crosswalk in. I mean, it's something to look at.
And any things that could happen, I was, one of the things, and I don't know in practicality or feasibility, I mean, probably, that's a question to justify, but like with the, when you're going up, along our way, where the, when you make the right, you're on the bridge, you go up the ramp, that little fence there, is there any way you could pull that back more up the street a little bit? I don't know in practicality, I just was thinking, I was down there, that would stop them with false sense of coming out of the way across, because of the barrier, you can't.
Right.
And that's the kind of thing I think we need, and I don't know, I've never really measured it, I mean, I just, I was just thinking on a common sense wise, just, and I don't know, but you can, but maybe some at least are looking at, you know what I mean?
That's DOT, right, that wing wall, Charles, is DOT on the opposite side, on both sides? But the sidewalk, the sidewalk under the trestle is ours, is that ours?
Um, that's, yeah.
Good question.
It's a, it's a, good question, I would say it is our responsibility, yeah.
We shovel, we shovel it, right? And we maintain it.
Yeah, we maintain it, and so if we had to repair it or replace it.
Right. Do you know that for certain?
I don't know that for certain, but, yeah, I would say that we want to maybe first check with New Jersey Transit, the C.
The villages.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the priorities of the villages are, right?
Right.
The wall, they're not.
Yeah, yeah. So I, you know, it's part of the right-of-way, you know, that, because the road and the right-of-way going through there, so it's a little bit gray, it could be a little bit gray, you know, we need to look at that more closely.
Those are, I think those are the easiest, I'm not saying, I think the most practiced solution, but I, because I don't know who owns water, I'm just looking at it, and whether we, like we talked, Charles, and I talked about this while ago, about some kind of barrier on the, I guess it would be the east side, which would be the side on the, as you're coming down Chestnut to the left. If any kind of barricade or barrier for the sidewalk could be built up, then you can't, you can't run over and get in there. I'm just thinking, the only way, I think it's going to practically, we did this with the traffic calming, we did this stuff all the time in different areas, we have to look at, just the way you set things up is going to determine how it's going to go. You know, the.
All you have to do is direct the flow of people and they'll follow it.
Exactly.
Unless they're going to climb over.
Except they were trapped, we have a problem.
Right, right. So let's look into that, Charles, let's see if we can do that. I mean, how, what's the length of, is it 100 feet maybe?
Yeah, I would, yeah, I wouldn't think it's much more.
What things are they jumping?
Mayor, the school bus picks up on the top of Law Bell on the right corner.
Wall fence?
That's what I just, Tex Cliff, the owner, the manager, picks up the top of Law Bell on the right corner, just ask them if they come up Chestnut or Orange Turnpike, I'm waiting for them to come.
Yeah, I mean, look, it's getting darker and earlier and earlier. I mean, we're asking for a problem now that, you know, the Sheldon is open, it's getting more and more populated, I mean, I think we're just asking for trouble here.
No, let's look at the sidewalks, yes, we agree, let's look at the sidewalks, the width of the sidewalk, some type of barrier.
Maybe some more lighting?
We just put in the new lighting.
No, they did, I'm just saying, go and take a look, maybe a spotlight or something like that.
Maybe a little more.
I can think, if you want, just, I'm just, it's as big as dark, I mean, it's very lighted, but it's, people walking, it's going to.
Yeah, I think the concern there, because we had talked about adding more light, and I think the concern was the positioning of the light because of traffic, we're blind any traffic coming down there, so something we need to look at closely.
Yeah, it will make visibility worse.
You know where it gets a little dark is by the stairs, because you've now gotten past the underpass, the stairs over there, there's really, if you could put lighting there somehow, just some, it would eliminate the sidewalk.
And let's take a look at it, take a look at the lighting and then actually the fencing or the railing, whatever we want to call it, the barrier.
Just a thought, is we be able to get reversed from New Jersey Transit or?
We can look into that.
Okay. Ramapo recently issued a policy of no vaping in public places, which I thought was a good move. Does that cover all the public places here, or do we have to add, you know, extend, I mean, I think it's a good thing, I mean, clearly marketing for kids, all these flavors, it's turning out to be very dangerous. I think it would be a good idea for us to kind of replicate that here if it's not covering all of our public places.
So I think, I was thinking along the same lines of smoking, because it wouldn't, vaping wouldn't be covered under the smoking local law, like smoking in the building, and, right? So we just have to mimic the local law for vaping?
Right.
Is that something that we could look into?
Sure.
That's very similar, just to smoking.
Yeah.
But it's not smoking, it's vaping.
Right, it's not covered.
Right.
And then nothing to take action on, but, Ed, you and I talked about this one-on-one before, but maybe we should consider next summer maybe not canceling two workshops, maybe it seems like we probably need to meet maybe one, or maybe shifting where that one is that we keep, but that's, again, nothing to decide on now, just to throw it out. That's all I got.
Okay, sounds good. Anybody else have anything else? So we have the, some discussion on the special permit application for the dog kennels in 11 Wayne Avenue? Yes. So I have some concerns in regards to that, that permit. First of all, once again, was there available parking? There's pre-existing non-conforming residential there, should it be publicly noticed? Was the GML properly submitted to the county? They did not include any of the maps, they did not include the referral form, there was no narrative, no cover letter. So I think we really just have to revisit that and make sure that we proceed in the right direction with the county, and I'm not sure about noticing the public, even though it's in the GB, there's still pre-existing non-conforming residential in that zone, does that, will that impact those residents? I don't know, any thoughts? No? What do you say, Joe?
I think it will, I think it'll have a negative impact on both across the street and to the left, in addition to where are the, where's the feces and the urine going to go?
Right.
There is no property, even if they created a space, you're talking about all day, every day, if the apartments weren't there, you know, there are auto shops, it's just something for the board to think of, is the urine and the feces. You know, there's a reason why they're set, when you go to Chestnut Ridge, you go to other places that have these, they're on land, they're, you know, they're not on postage stamp, they're, they have land to them, you know, urine and feces in the hot summer days gets to be, even cleaning up the feces, the urine, I mean, everybody's had an animal.
Right.
You can't, you know, it's something to think about. The land that they do have is very, very small, you know, again, it's, this is a tough call for the board, I don't envy. There are three legal non-conformings across the street, there are four next door, those are the closest, so there's that to think about, and then the daytime businesses that are right there. You know, it's an old building, noise is gonna, you know, noise is going to get out there, again, it's just something to think about.
And once again, parking would be another issue.
Parking would be, they do have the bus, you know, there are some spaces with something like this, you do get a heavy drop-off pickup, not, you know, a lot of hanging out, so to speak. There are some, but if it does get busy, you know, that's an active bus, behind it is the active bus road, in the front of it is Route 202, so.
Is there an access point into the building from the back?
There is, it would be difficult for them to make that for the public, it would be difficult for them to make that for their patrons, I should say. It used to be basically all garage access somewhat. The other main access point would be through the neighboring building, who used to own or possibly still does own the building. Now whether or not he, you know, allows them to use it, the general public couldn't. The only real entrance for the building for the people dropping off would be from 202, they would have to park in the back, walk them around, could maybe park on the side for quick, but.
There's no blocking there.
No, PD may run issues, right.
They could park in the municipal lot and walk up, I mean.
They could, they could.
They're not that far.
Correct, I mean, we know how lazy people are, we do know how lazy people are, but I think, you know, again, it's a tough, that's a tough decision.
Did any of that, your comment about the feces, did any of that feedback go back to them to see what their?
I brought up the feces with them, and of course, they would pick up the feces, you know, and obviously dispose of it properly, the urine.
So they would walk the dogs outside and they just pick it up?
No, they would, they would pick up the feces, is as far as we got, they're not a, the interesting thing is, they're not claiming to be a walking service, they're a grooming and boarding service. You know, again, there's a very small, I suggest, honestly, personally, I suggest taking a look at the property, maybe before making.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
Grooming, obviously, there's usually, there wouldn't be any feces or urine associated with grooming side of it.
Correct.
But if they're boarding, if it was sort of.
That's their main, is the boarding.
Right, the boarding, if it was sort of, I'm just throwing, so I'm not in favor or against, I'm just hypothetically, you know, hypothetically saying, if they were mandated that they could not walk the dog on that property, but had to, you know, go in the neighborhood like a normal dog situation of a homeowner, that might alleviate that issue.
Sure, absolutely, it's a special use permit, so there's plenty of stipulations that could be put on it, that's a beautiful part, if the planning board could, or the village board could put, as, I mean, Rob would be the one to ask about that, but I believe you could put as many stipulations as possible, or as you wanted, I should say.
I think that seems like a no-brainer, if the, I'm not familiar with the exact size of the property, but if it's too small to walk and have, you know, a dog on that property, make it that they cannot walk a dog.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Don't need to walk their dogs, you know, it's just part of taking care of a dog, you need to walk it.
Sure, and possibly a, you know, something to think about is their own, their own refuse service, where our guys are not picking up, you know, feces all day, every day from that place, you know, they may, again, it's something you might have to.
Yeah, legally, you.
I mean, bags full of it is what I mean, yeah.
That's predominant waste.
Right, yeah, right.
So I think you want to talk to them about what we can't do in terms of the documentation additional requested, all right?
Okay.
But I definitely feel like, you know, if they can overcome those other things, you know, that would be important in consideration, that's all.
It would be, it would be a good service for the village. There, there isn't one close, I mean, you know, jump from.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't see, I don't see, you know, negative except, except what you pointed out there. That was a very big point, that they could be mandated not to walk on the property, I think.
The biggest negative is whether the door's going to be walked in all night.
Well, yeah.
But he told us about all the residents, that's, that's the biggest negative. There are people that live right next, it's not my building he's talking about. There are buildings that live, that they live seven, eight feet away from that, from that dog bark, dogs barking. And across the street, it's not, and it's not my building, all right? That's the biggest issue, okay? Is whether they're going to be kept up all night, and you're going to have the cops being called every five minutes to shut the dogs up.
Hey, Joe, the, the business on Lafayette down by Suffering Food Mart?
Ford Diva?
Ford Diva, is that, that's not boarding?
Grooming only.
There's no problem with any of that?
The only, the only area that group, that boarding is allowed is in the G B. And, and again, the, the code is specific as far as proximity to, to residents.
I feel like I remember her stating it was more that she wanted to be a training facility and that those dogs that were being trained would be staying and that there would not be supervision at night.
Oh, unsupervised dogs? They'd leave them there?
Yeah, like it would any other.
I don't know.
Kennelled animal.
I guess, yeah.
I seem to remember that.
Wow, okay.
That there wouldn't be anyone there at night.
Except the barking dog.
Except.
Correct, correct. Oh, yes, they would, they would, I apologize, I didn't understand what you're saying. More, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be permitted to stay there at night. It's a commercial business. You know, it's, it's not a mixed-use business, they, you know, I, I mean, that would be a whole different ballgame. They couldn't, in other words, the animals would be there unsupervised in evenings in kennels. Correct.
Do they plan on overnight boarding?
Overnight boarding, yes. And the boarding would be their primary use. The, the grooming would be secondary to the boarding, was what we were told.
Okay. That's a consideration as well.
Any further? Next, I have a resolution here amending the 2019-2020 general fund budget to transfer funds from outside data processing and books and references to overtime for village clerk's office. Do you have the, the resolution in front of you? Anybody have any questions?
Wasn't this the one that, didn't Ralph, didn't you pull this one back?
No, not this one.
What was D then? Wasn't it D you were pulling back?
Yeah, that was a different one.
Not this. I think it's going to be this one because we, we've got this agenda fairly related. So this is, so what's driving this? It says, we reduce staff by 1.5 employees.
Right, so we lost Virginia, and Kathy's working half-time.
And this P D has to talk to these, we accept until the end of regular business hours.
So we're not able to close the window earlier than, to close out the books. That's what we initially thought that we'd be able to do.
Let me ask a question, though. Why does accepting payments, for example, to the end of regular business hours create overtime? Why would that be an overtime scenario?
President, regular business hours are at four. So in order to close out the, the box, the money.
Yes.
They have to stay after four.
I see, to continue counting, whatever. Okay, I got you.
Is that right?
Yes.
Anyone else?
That would only be during certain times of the year, though, if this were necessary, like during tax season.
Tax season and water bill collection.
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into an executive session to receive legal advice and counsel subject to the attorney-client privilege and to discuss personnel matters regarding a particular person or persons.
So I make the motion.
I'm sorry, before, do we need to cover this one?
No, you can review it. We can, we can all review it.
Yeah, it wasn't, it was sort of just blended in there. There was a cell phone policy in the village, so we have to create a cell phone policy. That was a recommended cell phone policy.
Still going? I'm thinking about it. Roar, roar!
I'd like us to stay here.
Yeah, yes, 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 yes.
Was there a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, the motion, Paul.
I'll second it.
We'll resecond, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Will there be any action?
There will be no.
No action, thank you.
No, there will be no official action.
Other than coming out of the executive session and closing the meeting.
Right.